So we'll just start the conversations. Do we have to do one of the three firsts?
You know, I was assuming you want to discuss them all for you.
Yes, yeah. Not because you're looking at me, I didn't know if I needed to do something.
Which one do you want to talk about first?
Yeah, let's talk about, we can go in order, Board Docs, and then we can do the committee charges. Yes? Everybody?
Good.
Good. Anybody that want to open us up?
Um, I'm not sure. I feel good about us moving forward because it seems like, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe if you guys spoke to people at the convention about who had first firsthand use with it, I know Dr. Ackerman also had first hand use with it as well in their previous tutorials. But it seems like it's something that the vast majority of other districts are doing, which leads me to believe that there is a reason for that. It could just be that they walk up on the back end by, but it leads me to believe that there is a reason that the technology is very helpful and would allow us to be more transparent with our agendas and linking the contracts and documents and the FOIL process would be easier. So it seems like it could streamline everything for us and allow us to be more transparent to our constituents. So that seems like positives to me, and I haven't really heard any particular negatives other than it obviously costs money and we have to weigh the cost versus the benefit. But the fact that it's operating is the only issue that, you know, is really up for debate for me personally.
I'll contribute to the discussion. I've asked a couple of times and I'd like to frame our discussion today in terms of identifying what we want to accomplish in terms of either, you know, capabilities we want to enhance and grow or problems we want to fix and address. Start by identifying those clearly and then look at what's the best way to address those issues. I think, you know, there's a risk when you start with just the technology and say should we buy it or not. That frames the conversation rather than saying what do you want to accomplish. And so that's what I really love to hear is what are we trying to accomplish? So we can identify that and then talk about the best way to accomplish. And then to put aside, it's a very minor question, but on the cost aspect, I know we have this, you know, BOSI's price estimate and it has the, you know, ten grand, ninety-eight, ninety-five every year, but also lists these as prorated subscription costs, prorated annuals. So I'm unclear if the ten grand is actually what it will cost each year or that's only what it will cost for the remainder of this year. But the bigger picture I want to start with is just framing, what are we trying to accomplish? And what do you think this will do for us?
It did also let's go one time to the, oh, something, there was something that first you talked about.
Yeah, that ninety-eight, I'm looking at it from a personal point of view. That ninety-eight, ninety-five is not what it will cost us next year. It'll cost something different, I don't know how much.
Yeah, but actually I realize like I'm, this is what I'd like to do is just say, what do we want to accomplish, not even talking about this technology. What transparency do you want to enhance and what, or what issues are we trying to address?
Well, do you have, do you have any, like, can you answer your own, I guess, question?
Um, I have some of the ones that you told me, which I can easily, y'all share them. If you tell me if I'm repeating that correctly, I think I'd answer them. So what I've heard is a desire for greater transparency when we publish the agenda so that contracts or potentially change orders, that kind of information is available to our public. Absolutely agree. Our residents should be able to see that information, so I would like to see that. I know one of the tools talked about is also a policy workflow tool. I do think that we want to have a policy revision and review tracking capability, but I want to question if signing up for expensive tool is the way to. Typically, what I see if I work in New York City is usually a lot of code revision. Use spreadsheets to track your products as a workflow tool. And I think we should identify what we want to accomplish and then decide if this tool is worth its cost or if we can accomplish those things in other ways to really scrutinize this expenditure to make sure we're spending our taxpayers' money either returning it to them or spending it on better technical tools or at least on things that will contribute to student outcomes.
Please, please, there's actually one question. I'll figure out the numbers here. Starts July 1st, the year, generally speaking?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is where I was at, I was hoping you could tell me more about what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, you know, so, um, and anybody feel free to jump in because honestly, like my, my hopes for exploring Board Docs slash diligent community was never like, I'm not the Board Docs ambassador. Like, I'm not here to make a sales pitch. It's, for me, it was for the entire board to sort of explore together without knowing a lot more, except for the fact that I've been on the board five years, right? My fifth year, so, and then just kind of seeing and hearing from other districts and what's been working, what's not been working, not just necessarily with Board Docs diligent, but just in general, in our way, in the way that we have been publishing or been able to find documents, necessary documents for board meetings. So it's really not, I have this great idea that this is like, I'm here to like, you know, push this forward. I do think we should move forward with it only because I don't know why we shouldn't. I don't have any strong, I don't have a strong conviction to why we shouldn't move to a more modern, efficient, streamlined platform where, you know, I've talked to a lot of board members from multiple districts, you know. I mean, I listen, like, you know, these are all like just neighboring, like Byron Hills, White Plains, Bronzeville, Beckford, Bahala, Croton, Hastings-on-Hudson, Edgemont, Rynek, Rarcliff, Sarsdale, Maranick, Artsleye, I mean, those are just to name a few. But when I asked, and even at the convention, I think the first response everybody gave me, and I'm not sure if it would to you the same, was why isn't Chappal on it?
Well, I think since this point.
Can we, you go ahead.
Right, I don't want to speak for you, but I think roughly, I think it's fourteen thousand dollars a year. If the prorated, you know, starts to clock in July, monthly costs, you know, add it up to about fourteen a year. Can they articulate why they do use it? Like, what problem are, what problem are you trying to fix?
Yeah.
That it's going to fix?
I think for one, it's really, there's a lot of, there is like a centralized document management system, basically, right? So you have agendas, minutes, policies, any supporting materials that are all in one location. It's easy access for not only board members, but really the community. There is a big, I think, sentiment of it eliminates the whole version confusion with the emails updating with the attachments when anytime there's a, there's a change or a revision to the agenda. So that's one, and it's improved efficiency, it streamlines agenda creation, it enables quick updates. You know, the transparency accessibility piece, it's really more of, if it's on there, it supports compliance with OML, right? Open Meetings on, it also supports the transparency law of oil rights to community members. It's audit ready, it's compliance support, easy reporting for state audits and public inquiries, as known as FOIL processes. I just think the public will gain improved access to board materials in compliance with transparency laws. You know, I don't want to feel like I'm here like trying to, again, making a sales pitch or trying to defend Board Docs, because to me, it's just, my thinking was, okay, every other district in our, you know, in our near community is using the platform and New York State School Boards uses it, and if you looked at the policy review options, everything was done through Board Docs. I think, I mean, that's really it. It's just a modern, more efficient, streamlined way, and it's a platform that Board, New York State Board uses it. We're trying to get that going, and if people are not okay with it, you know, then that's fine. I just wanted to open the discussion.
I mean, I think all the, the aim you described about having greater availability or easier availability for residents to access, you know, agendas, meeting minutes, contracts, supporting documentation, absolutely, we should do that. But I would like to start the conversation of can we do that with our existing technology tools instead of an additional technology tool that is fifteen thousand dollars? You know, the community that, the perception I received from the community is not try a bunch of things and see what works, the, you know, certainly the esoteric community see from our community is that they really want us to scrutinize how we spend our money, make sure we're not wasting our money. You know, we did have a budget that was voted down. We do want to be able to save the confidence to our community that every dollar we're spending is really contributing to student outcomes. So I agree with you that having better access to those documents, more transparent access will help our parents, help our families, better support their students, probably to better student outcomes. What I'd like to ask is, can we do that right now on our current website? You know, can, is it possible, Lisa, to post links, hyperlinks in our current agendas to, to the various documents that would be referenced, you know, that would be publicly available documents?
We could do that right now.
But I don't know if that's, I'm sorry, Lisa, I'm not sure if that's a question for Lisa because it's not just Lisa's. I mean, I mean, go ahead, continue. But I just wasn't sure that you could, like, are you able to answer that? Like, it's not just you, it's like a whole team of people that are doing that, so I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so right now, when an agenda is published on Friday afternoon, you all get it on Thursday. On Friday afternoon, I give it to David. He publishes the agenda for the community and links the documents that are appropriate to link, which are not all the contracts because a lot of those contracts have personally identifiable information on them. And so that's just, doesn't get.
So if we went to Board Docs, those same contracts would not be available?
That would be for Board Docs.
That would be correct. Okay.
Dr. Ackerman, do you have anything to share? I know you have some thoughts about that.
I just want to do whatever the board feels like they need to do to organize themselves and that means in a way that's most effective, so whatever decision the board needs to support. And I'll take, if we do move with Board Docs, it's going to take us a few months to get ready to use it. And we'll just have to hope about the timing around that. There's probably some months that are better to roll it out than others. Like, March wouldn't be a good time for us.
No.
So, you know, I, just whatever decision you guys make, we'll make work on it.
I know, just personally and as a resident and as a taxpayer, I'd like, before our district spends fifteen thousand dollars on a technology tool, I'd like to see if we can accomplish the goals without having to.
So is that the price? Is that the number?
Well, I think that if it's ninety-eight hundred dollars portable here for, let's say, eight months, then that would be about thirteen-seven, excluding that one time fee, so it would be about thirteen-seven.
The price in this contract is as if we were signing, signing.
In like November?
In November, yeah, so to be adjusted if we went later than that?
It's back to nothing here, but I think it's thirteen-seven eighty-eight, but, you know.
And you find that number in a couple of places, and is that another teacher? Is that another math support person?
To be fair, we did just, you know, agree to pay like four to five thousand dollars for a PD speaker, and I'm not saying that that's not valuable, but I think we're talking about this like it's astronomical, expensive. I personally don't believe that this is a huge expenditure for the board or for the district, so.
I just think it's money well spent for Board Docs and just to streamline everything and move to a modern, more modernized platform. And that's it, I don't have any, like, I don't have anything else more than what I've shared during our meeting with Drew and the previous workshop, the work session that we had, and, you know, we went over to the booth when we were at the convention, talking with leadership from NISBA, different organizations that use this, and I just, unless someone could tell me, like, it's really, and we don't have to agree, that's okay, but I think it's, it's a good use of, I don't think we're mismanaging or being lack of issue by moving to this platform.
I would agree with you. I think that obviously anytime we're spending any of the district's money, we all give it pause and think about, anyway, all the things that we're talking about. I don't think it is an astronomical sum of money either, and it does seem to me that every other district is using it and New York State is using it, or NISBA, and, and so to me, all the other school districts are also using it, if that, that weighs heavily for me as to say, why would we not? And it seems like it's the main stream program. It doesn't seem like some kind of unproven, unchecked program. And I agree that any dollar we spend, we have to think about carefully, but it seems like this is a program that wouldn't have value for us.
I still haven't heard what it will allow us, permit us to do that we can't do already, and therefore I don't see a prospectation for spending much on it.
Well, I, we have right now, Dr. Ackerman, please clarify, we have right now FOIL processing officers, right?
Josh is the FOIL officer, and then his staff, and we have someone that works on a Skype that when we receive requests like that.
Okay, so this, you've used the older version in your previous district. You told me, you know, nine years before you got here, and now is that you, I know that you were talking about it in the work session last night, how it is, it looks better. I don't know, you're the only one sitting at this table that are used it?
I, so I just, my role in putting the agenda together is not manipulating Board Docs, right? It's reviewing the agenda and it is making sure all of the resolutions are appropriate. So the person who's the best to get feedback on regarding the use of Board Docs in terms of the work environment is really a district clerk. Because they're the one that is putting it together. It, in terms of FOIL, our process is so related to the technology that we have. I don't, I don't know if Board Docs would make it easier or not because we'd be pulling out information, normally we do it through server searches. So I don't, I don't know if I'd, it would be, I don't know if I'd feel comfortable saying it would be easier with this or it wouldn't be easier with this because really when we get a request, we're using technology to pull based on search terms, and it would be pulled from the website and from the emails or the Board Docs.
I mean, listen, I, I'm not going to go through all of the specifics on like how many times I've gotten a phone call from a community member because they couldn't access or find a policy that we were, you know, reviewing and, or they were looking for a contract, whether they needed to go do the, you know, more formal FOIL process or not, I don't even know. Or if it should have been linked to the actual item on the agenda, I'm not really sure. But I think, again, to say that I, again, I don't have a reason why I would want to move forward with this new platform, and, and that's it.
Max, do you have any feelings?
Well, I think to be fair, I never saw Drew's presentation, but I respectfully, even if it's not a lot of money, I, I, I'm with him on this, I don't see, I don't understand the problem that we're trying to fix. So for that, I just don't see, I don't see how it makes our lives or the community's lives any better by spending, even if it's one dollar, but it's, you know, it's roughly fourteen to three thousand dollars a year, and I just haven't heard a good reason why we need it, other than other communities are using it, but I think that we hold ourselves to our own standard here, so I, that doesn't move the needle for me. It's, I, I don't, I'm not convinced that we need it. And again, I don't know what problem we are trying to fix by utilizing it.
If it's a workflow tool that the district clerk is using, I can see the argument. If it was going to free up significant time of the district clerks, and then the district clerk is going to perform new additional duties that will worth fifteen thousand dollars a year, I'd say great. I like your lot of things though, but if you're able to get your work done in your work hours for your salary, I don't want to spend more money on tool free. No offense, unless we're going to give you some.
I think, no.
Not a question. Respectfully.
Respect.
Are you looking for it from me or not?
I'm looking, yeah, what do you think?
How do you know you said, you know, I can't speak from personal experience. I have heard occasional outbursts from the district clerk group about the efficacy of it and when it stalls or when it goes down. It's not frequently, but it's often enough that, you know, two hours before a board meeting, you don't have an agenda. That's a little problematic, but, you know, like I said, it's not necessarily frequent, but it is often enough. Also, then I would wonder, would you still need paper binders? Would you still need, like, and what format would you physically want the agenda? Does that determine if that's going to free me up for more fun things?
I would, I would still want paper binder. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I mean, I just, that's how I process information better, and I can read hundreds of those stacks online.
I'm in that same camp too.
That's fine.
Yeah, no, I, I'm like, well, listen, I'm old and I like to begin.
I think you recorded on tape. I'm not joking, yeah. So can I just share just a, like a process thing? So this is not like a resolution, because it would be signing a contract and policies. So that's how we would get the service, it would be by vote. So I'm not sure if you want to decide by consensus here as to whether or not you want to sign, like, enter into a cross contract.
Did you say it would be by vote?
No, no, it would be like through consensus, like, if you want to decide by consensus, if three of you want me to enter into the contract or not, that would be how to make a, make a decision around this. It's not like a separate resolution.
I have just a suggestion is that if we don't want to roll it out right away anyways, excuse me, because we just want to be conscious of the budget season, and this is going to be prorated anyways, can we articulate, identify the thing we want to accomplish and just try for a month or two if we can accomplish those things without committing to fourteen thousand dollars a year in perpetuity? And give it a couple of months and see if we can, you know, enhance some of the transparency, address some of the issues using the tools we have, and if it's not working out, let's go to Board Docs.
I think that's fine, but I'm ready to move forward with it. Like, today, like, not like today, but I'm ready to move forward. Like, I, we had two work sessions, this is our third one. We've had opportunities to ask questions and figure things out. I'm very confident and want to move forward with it, but I understand if others don't, and that's how I feel.
My thought on the work sessions is that the previous ones we had were really just receiving, you know, the sales pitches from the Board Docs sales rep, and we didn't really have time to discuss ourselves and really talk about and define what we're trying to do and have this kind of conversation. So I think this is a fantastic conversation and really just a framework for, you know, any kind of issues we're looking at in the future, including potentially bigger ones. I would love to start with just us sitting around the table chatting about what we hope to accomplish, what we think, and then frame how we look at issues and how we look at solving problems.
I mean, for me, this is, I mean, we've had, what, like five board meetings? So, you know, I can't, I can't speak to whether or not this would make it easier for me personally because I feel like I don't have that experience as, you know, a board member, and you know what you know. I will say, you know, like, like was said before, I know that we don't necessarily want to do things just because other places do them. I do think there's something to be said to looking to districts that are like us, and, you know, it makes me feel a little better, you know, fiduciary wise, if we're thinking about spending this kind of money, that district's in similar situations to us are doing it. You know, I remember at my training, with the new board member training, a lot of people talking about like having to, you know, go to the street, but Board Docs is in the same kind of surprise that Chappal wasn't doing it. So for me, it kind of makes me wonder, like, are we, are we missing out on something being so much easier? That is a question I cannot answer because I have not done both, and I have not been here long enough, so.
But are they, are they then defining to you what, how Board Docs facilitates their work? And if it's, is it a tool that is supposed to be powerizing easier? I thought it was supposed to provide more transparency to the public. I don't, I find the way we're doing it right now to be very easy. I know what everything is, I get a delivery every Thursday, or whenever, sometimes Friday. That's all fine for me, like, I can follow the flow. I don't, I think that everything I get is totally, it's in my fingers and I can utilize it and figure out where everything's going. If it's to provide an added level of transparency to the public, I personally haven't heard that, you know, clamoring for like higher defined change orders in a way that, and again, to this point, you can probably figure out why is it streamlined out with the system that we have in place now. Just by their, you know, surprise that we're not using it, that doesn't indicate to me that we should be using it. They then need to tell you why they're using it, because every time you're making a purchase, you should probably have a reason as to why, just because they, maybe those board members have always utilized it that way or have done things that way, just like we've always done it this way. So for me, I'm okay with the way things are.
I mean, I agree with that. I'm not looking forward to make my experience with the agenda better. I, I'm happy with the way that my agenda experience is right now. And so, I don't really want to go with training, is it a training you have to go to? Because that might change.
I did hear that.
That's probably differently now. But yeah, I was feeling my interface with what we have going on now is a bit totally blind. I was under the impression that it would make our, the public's ability to use it. And then that is the reason that they can now click on the agenda, click on the contracts that they can see, or click on, if we're talking about a policy, just click on that policy that they can see, and that makes the, our parents and community easier, it's easier for them to find what they need to find, then I think that's great. I think that right now, going on our policy thing and try to find the policy, it's really, really hard. You can't just like Google like sports policy and like nothing comes up, you know what I'm saying? You can't just easily find as a parent, navigate through our policies as they are right now. So it was my impression that not only do they help with the agenda setting, but it also takes all of our policies over to their site and that is forward facing to the public, and therefore the parents can much more easily find a given policy, a given, you know, question or contract or whatever. So that was my main reason for running it, not to change my experience, but to help our parents.
Yeah, I think that's a little, that's like my, my experience is no experience. So for me, I don't, I don't care, right? Like, it's, that's what I care about.
Right.
It's going to make it easier for other people to use, you know.
And to Tim's point, I think, you know, the idea of us trying like to hybrid sort of doing it on our own for a few months, while I totally get that. I don't know if just linking things in the agenda is also going to take care of that policy problem and making our websites and things more easy for the parents. So that would be my reason to move forward is that, yeah, we can link things to our agenda on our own, and that would save us money, but the policy piece, I didn't think was easy for us to do, and that's why that would really help the parents. But the policy piece, I didn't think was easy for us to do and that's why that would really help the parents.
So I've gone on a bunch of other school districts' websites, you know, that use Board docs, and their policy navigation is essentially the same. It's zero, hundred, one hundred level, two hundred level, you click on it, it expands a tree, which is what we have on our website. I do remember for saying from the presentation, somebody asked me a question about the search capability, and it's the same as ours, it's just a keyword search. The one feature they had that ours doesn't is that you can limit your results by start and end date. But other than that, I don't think we go to Board docs, you're gonna have the ability to have intelligent searching and people are still just gonna have to pick through the, you know, the the tree of policies by number category. You know, if, again, if if we can add links to the contracts that are public, that should be publicly available on the agendas we have right now and we can do it for free, that seems worth it to me. And if we, you know, if people are having a lot of trouble finding policies, it doesn't sound to me like going to Board docs is going to help them find policies in in a convenient way. Maybe there's a human factor to anything, maybe we make like a, you know, most important policies for athletes, you know, with like links to the four policies that people would care about. Maybe we signpost a couple of things that people are looking for. If if you're hearing that a lot of people are having trouble finding particular policies, maybe we find a way to signpost it better on the website with like a most used policies page or something. But again, just I I haven't heard an articulation, you know, if this thing is so great, somebody who's using it should be able to articulate why it's so great, and I haven't heard.
Just wanna clarify, if you look at the agenda right now, we do have stuff on there for the agenda.
Yeah, and.
So you know, online right now, we have like the bid wars are on there, like all that stuff is there.
But what I'm hearing is that nothing else would be linked, because it sounds like those are contracts that have personally identifiable information. So.
I think everything that can be foiled would be there. But if I could just, so then, did everybody say their piece about how they feel about Board docs?
Yeah.
So. I just, I'm looking at the time, I just wanna be mindful of the time and if we can, if everyone, if nobody has anything further to say, can we move forward with Board docs?
You want me to sign the contract to get Board docs, is that what you're saying?
Yes, three of us want it, so I I.
I just have everybody affirmatively say what they want. If we're essential voting.
Well, I think that's what we were saying.
Well, yeah, but I I I agree with Tim, like we should all, like on the record, I'm out.
I'm against it, I don't, I have not heard a business case for spending this money. I think we should return to the taxpayers or spend on something that's gonna contribute to student progress.
I'm for it.
I wonder if there is a way that we can ask a neighboring district in a more directed way, like, because I'm hearing everything that that Tim and Matt are saying and, but at the same time, I feel like, and to your point, like everyone else using it is not a reason, but it seems like an indicator that it has good things to offer. So I, for me, I feel like if there was a way to ask, you know, a neighboring district to we have a relationship with, you know, how they feel about it overall, like what are the three best reasons for it, what are the three worst reasons? And and just to get a little more information around that, I mean, you guys spoke to people directly. I I don't know if anyone gave you like tangible things. I haven't spoken to anyone personally, Steve. So while I do wanna move forward with it, I do feel like to your point, you know, it seemed like in the presentation that he had a lot of pros and a lot of reasons to do it. But upon this conversation, it seems like we're saying that maybe not everything that we got in the sales pitch is a hundred percent flushed out. So I do feel more hesitant now than I felt before, but I feel like if we had that, you know, relationship with another district where we could get some information that's a little more concrete about, you know, it didn't really, they probably have a system before, which is why they had to go to this and now it's fine, or they were doing it some other, how were you doing it, and oh, it's so much better because yada, yada, yada. So to me, that would be more convincing and I feel like would make me feel more secure about it. I don't know if it would make you guys feel better about it to have that information or it's relevant.
Actually, no, if something if something could articulate, you know, to your point, if something could articulate, it helped our district for this reason, because say, oh, that applies to our district, how would happen if we go yesterday's? You know, if it was gonna, if we're gonna spend fourteen thousand dollars a year, it's a great investment that's gonna help us then achieve greater student outcomes. Absolutely.
And I don't mean to drag this out, because I know that it did, we had talked about it a number of times now, so, but I do think this is the first like really substantive discussion we've all had about it together. And I think that I, you know, came into this meeting being very for it, and I'm not saying that I'm not for it now. I I do feel good about it, but I think those are reasonable questions to get answered and then maybe you guys would feel better about it too, though you all. Um, I'll say that.
Yeah, I mean, I also. I steer towards being for it. I also think that we are bored that, you know, we all work together and have to kind of, this is something, as much as it's for the community, it is for us and I would like for all of us to want to do this. I also, you know, if the implication is that we're not, you know, spending money correctly, I don't I don't want anyone to feel that way. So, you know, I kind of look away from people and maybe talking to.
So we spoke with people, I mean, I I spoke with, you spoke with people, so what, would you like phone numbers of board members?
I don't know, I'm really.
Any specifics that are.
Well, like Drew Drew is doing his job, he's presenting, he's a salesperson. I think what Tim and I are both asking for is like, you guys met people at, you know, the conference, they just said, oh, wow, you're not using it. They didn't say, wow, this this does X, Y, and Z for us, and this is how I can't believe you're not using it. I just wanna hear it, I I don't, I I prefer that from anyone.
What I heard mostly was the transparency for the community about it. I think I'm hearing that because for anybody talking to me, I don't have any, you know, experience one way or another. I have a long, you know.
As far as your work.
As far as my, you know, like, so for me, anyone that spoke to me about it was talking about the transparency for the community and the ease of use for the community. That's what I contribute to, you know, to your.
And that's what I took away from his presentation as something that we could do better. Again, I don't plan on interfacing with it, I don't want to interfere, but I I feel like we'll still, I would like to receive my binder and and study the material the way I was studying the material, but I would let everyone in our community to be able to get what they need to get. And that's why I thought we were.
I mean, everything I said before is basically, I took notes from different people and trying to remember. I mean, they can really, it's, you know, I'll just repeat again for the sake of, like, it was really about like the meetings law, compliance, the FOIL compliance, any other ed law transparency requirements. It just streamlines everything, we didn't get into details about like how exactly like it works mechanically. I I don't have the answer for you for that. I think another big thing was reduces error and version confusion when there's multiple changes to the agenda leading up to the day, because things, people can access it real time as it's being amended onto the actual platform. So that was one thing, and they just feel like it's real time access and it's efficient. And so I don't, you know, again, I haven't used it, I still, I'm I'm, as you all know, I'm a paper and pencil type of person, so I'm getting paper copies now too, so it doesn't help us in the way like it eliminates waste in terms of trees or it doesn't, that doesn't work for us here and it doesn't apply to us because we're getting that. But, you know, that that's really what I got, I got the audit and compliance support, easy reporting for state audits and public inquiries. I mean, these were just things that, everything I said at the beginning of the meeting, those were the things. I don't know if you wanna talk to somebody, but I don't have anything more to share. That's it, so.
I mean, yeah, it's truly a three view now, I mean, if Tim and I are where we're at right now, I mean, I'm happy to to outsource to myself and find somebody for who uses it in Pleasantville and me and Tim can have coffee with them and then figure it out. But like, if the three of you wanna move forward, then that's also your, you know, the story that's works here.
Okay, well, I want everybody to feel comfortable about it, but I I I feel strongly and I feel good about it, I feel confident about it. I don't need any more information, but if others feel like they need more information, then we can just move on to the next topic and then come back to it. Or if every, if you're okay with just moving forward, I don't, you know.
How do you feel? I mean. I'm a team player, so like like historically.
You're a tennis player, though.
Yeah, but I'm a team sport, right, Dr. Ackerman? Thank you.
Okay.
I I want everybody to be comfortable making a decision like that. I am comfortable making that decision. So, you know, it kind of, that's what it is, I can't, you know, I can't.
I feel, I feel, I feel comfortable making a decision too. I guess another question I would just ask is, we're signing a one year contract, correct? Is that's what it would be, there's no, all closures are. Okay, so and it's pro rated, it's signed for the full year, it would just be from now.
The that number, it's the ninety eight.
Right, right, no, I'm saying, if we're, we did this till July, we did it from now until July, and we decided then that we didn't like it, it didn't add, it didn't add a benefit, it wasn't easier to use, it crashed seventy five times. Like, if we try it for this year, then we could always not renew it, right? And then just go back to what we've always done things and then we've given it a shot and then we can decide if it really is making life easier, making this more streamlined, making it more, like that to me seems like a good compromise, is say we'll do it for this pro rated year at the lesser cost and then have firsthand experience to say whether or not this was a great decision and let's keep doing it or just don't renew it.
Yeah, I think that we have to do it too, because we're gonna, it's gonna take us three months to get it all set up, so I don't have a lot of time to decide.
I also think.
I mean, it's like a two year, like if you do it, I think you should at least commit to doing it the rest of this year and then.
Okay, I mean, that's what I think, I don't. That seems totally reasonable to me, and then we could, you know, whoever's on the board at that point can can, you know, really evaluate it. Was it was it good for us, was it not, was it a waste of time?
I think it ultimately, I I hear you, but I think ultimately then it just becomes a line item that people just check off for. It's like, I I mean, this is very simplistic, but like, if your oven's working and you buy a new one just because you felt like you needed a new one, you just spent money and you're not gonna then go back to the old one. It's like you're you're spending money here and this, then it's gonna be in perpetuity, I agree with Tim. It's gonna be just something you check off, because it's not gonna be something that unless it crashes all the time, that's gonna outwardly say, but did you actually need it? Did it solve a problem for you? That would be my only pushback is to what what you're saying, is like, I get it, but like, you implement it, maybe if it doesn't crash, you're not gonna be like, well, but are you gonna get feedback from people? Wow, like, I can't believe how how much more transparent you guys are with Board docs, like, I was scrolling through the change orders and I couldn't believe it, like, I had all these. I don't know, I don't think that's gonna happen, but, you know, that that, I'm not, I'm not trying to change your mind, I'm just, that's my pushback on that, that's sort of like, unless it crashes, it's not gonna be, yeah, well, it didn't help. For me, it's not helping us and it's just there. It's just the same as, because I haven't, I haven't made one complaint about the way we're doing it yet, and it's costing us nothing.
Right, but also then, just just so that, right, so like, you haven't heard one complaint, but like, I've heard many, so that doesn't mean my complaints are more valuable than the no complaints that you've heard, right? It's in different issues like.
Were there complaints about transparency, about like difficulty navigating that, okay.
Yeah, so like, what so what I'm saying is that, without saying like because each of us heard from ten people, like, and like, it's not a matter of like how many or what we've heard, but I'm only going off of my experience and it's for me, it's not because I think something is so terrible right now, but I feel that this, from what I know and the information that I've gotten from other board colleagues throughout the region, I feel like this is a good move for our district, but again, we don't have to agree and that's okay. And so I I would like to just kind of move on to the next topic.
Can I just have a question, because our website tracking data, I don't, like. But I thought.
They come back like.
I feel it, and it's like, I think you track hits, but I don't think we can track it where.
Yeah, we might, we'll have to look into that to see how deep down we can go and see what pages are accessed.
We know access into the meetings, we know who who's watching the meetings.
Right.
I'd have to ask, I've never asked for that level of detail on the website, only on our social media platforms. But I want to ask Adam if he can get that ready for the next communications meeting. I still don't know if you guys want me to sign the contract.
Okay.
It's, I I think it's up to Melissa.
I know, I'm sorry, I.
I really need to move on to the next agenda.
Oh, yeah, I guess, can we move on?
No, 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 I just need to, no, I need you to just. Feel free to, it's okay, like, just feel free.
I mean.
It's not, none of this is personal, we just.
No, I know, we're all this four AM, we're trying to figure it out and you you need to just, you have to take a stand.
Yes or no, that's all, that's all. Because I really, I really do need to.
Okay, yeah, I think we should say no for now and then we can, if it comes up again later on, then we'll adjust it then.
Okay.
All right, next.
We'll move on to the committee charges and responsibilities. Everybody got a draft copy?
Of?
Of the different committee charges and responsibilities?
This is the same as the one late few days ago.
I I'm sorry, Kayla, I didn't see you updated this since the last, like, I didn't realize.
No, it's there, it's all there.
I I know, but I didn't like, I didn't, like, for the health and safety, I went into your updates and I combined them over the weekend, I didn't realize you did the facilities committee.
Oh, no, it's okay, we can just talk about it here, yeah.
And before we start, I wanna point out that shortly after you shared the document, a couple of weeks ago, I thought we were open to add suggestions, so I had added a folder, I didn't put it in a different color. It is under general committee guidelines, it's the third folder.
But and what, on which committee?
At the very top, before we went into the specific committees, it's just a general committee guidelines.
The chair's person.
Third folder, chairperson should solicit agenda proposals. So I wanted everyone to know that that was not something Dr. Ackerman prepared, that was a suggestion I.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who would like to start?
Quite, I have just a question for you, Bailey. The Board of Education shall appoint a chairperson, that is the Board of Education president, no?
Yes, actually, you're right, because we're, at least for, at least for this, this year.
Because we're not. Right. That's fine, that's not.
Yeah, because we passed that resolution at the beginning of the year.
Right, for this year, but it was a resolution, not a standing policy, right? It's a resolution that expires.
Yes, I made it expire at the end of, end of this year.
So how do we feel about just the reading, the way it reads now as opposed to being the president?
That seems good to me, because under the, with the resolution that that was passed, they they passed great and special meeting, the president appoints the chairperson, so that works. And then if that ever falls off, it would still work with Board of Education presumably doing it before.
That's fine, I mean, I, the only thing with this is I don't have a problem with this. I will tell you that, and this is something I learned this year when we went to the board officers meeting, that it is act, I know we decided that the president, which happens to be me, this year will appoint, but this is, it's best practice and common practice for other districts to to do that in a, on their board. I learned that this year, but I'm not saying we have to do that, but just wanted to put that out there.
But we think the best practice was to have the whole board.
The board president.
A president, I I'm I'm fine with either, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, yes, yes, no, that's the point.
I also saw on this the website that the best practice is for the president to serve. I also saw on NISBO website that a best practice is for the president to serve as an ex officio member on various committees. What about to that one?
I don't, I have not heard of other districts that share that practice, um. I, I don't know if we want that or if we need that. I feel like now because we have the committees at the whole, everyone is, can be present if they want, um, I'm not sure, and it's not like if you're not the chair, you don't get to speak, you know, or you speak less, or you say, you know, I, I feel like we value each other's opinions and respect each other, that we have that understanding that, I, I don't know, I don't think it's.
Comes down to your ability to discuss things, because if the president controls the agenda for the Board of Education meeting, and controls the agenda for half of the committees, it can be very hard, even if the other four members of the board wanted something, following the rules, it wouldn't be able to talk, or you'd bring it up for discussion.
I, I don't know if I agree, I think if we can find, um, the right context to talk about matters, um, for the agenda, whether it's committee meeting agenda or a regular business meeting agenda, I think having a discussion is not a bad thing, I think it just needs to be timely, and it needs to be appropriate and within a context.
So were you saying that you read that the board president doesn't chair any of the committees?
I think, I mean, I, I'm pretty sure that was on NISBO, like, president's handbook, and I think the discussion was that, this is probably for districts that are not, um, doing committee at the whole, that it's a common practice for the board president to be ex officio on every committee meeting, so they get visibility to every committee, but then that would also indicate that the president is not the chair of any of those committees. On the, you know, if, if, if we're talking about NISBO recommended practice, I was gonna share some other NISBO recommended practice going on.
I mean, we could, we could revisit all of this stuff again also next year, just because we have made some changes this year, and see how things work out. Um, I think the other piece of it this year was that because we had a big turnover in board membership, and people were part of committees for X number of years, and they were appointed to be the committee chairs for that reason. But, um, okay, we can, it doesn't look like, I'm just looking at the time, I don't know that if, if, it doesn't look like we're gonna be adopting any of this at the next board meeting on Wednesday, so we could.
We got eleven twenty minutes.
We could le- leave that, um, and if, it's like, if you wanted to.
Twenty twenty five, all right.
Yeah, well, what's our release date?
Two forty five.
What, we get through these charges and get stuff?
I also have a question statement.
So I, I am, I added under general committee guidelines, um, the Board of Education president, I, I did Tim's suggested bullet in green, and then there were no adjustments to the audit committee, there were no adjustments to the communication committee, and now are at the facilities committee where there are adjustments. So Kayla, did you wanna talk around, about your thinking around your recommendations?
Yeah, and again, this is not, in addition to what was already there, these were just some of my thoughts, I didn't wanna confuse by trying to like cross out things and add or combine, I just put my, the fresh box in there, um.
So under the charges, your, is the purple you have there what you, you think the charge should be?
I just, it's that good on what was there.
Okay. So then this would come out, and so people could, you guys could make comments.
Before we can get into the content of this, I'll say, I do, the current chart, I do like how it says the facilities committee advises the board, and even if it then goes into your language, I like the explicit reminder that the committees are advising the board, and not that the committees are actually conducting the oversight or directing employees, that we are recommending things to the board, for the board to that. But it could still be all the, you know, the facilities committee advising the board on how to best provide oversight guidance and all, all stuff.
I mean, that's fine. I think what's, what's happening is, it's a little like, I don't know if confusing is the right word, but because again, we're committees at the whole, and there is a forum of board members on all the committees, it feels like we are providing oversight, right? Um, so, that's fine, I don't know what you think, Dr. Ackerman.
I think, um, I, I kind of, I wonder if we could condense it so it's the same, like, follows the same pattern of the other committees. I also wanna talk about one of the responsibilities on here, because I, I, I'm just, I don't, I don't know based on the change order process if that should land in the facilities committee. Um, I do, many of them over the summer, there's no change order, there are no facility committee meeting over the summer, I think that's really a purview for the Board of Education in your, in your, uh, business meeting, so.
Yeah, I might, I might, I might.
Watch it, like, this.
No, and I, I sort of, um, I, I was thinking about that as I was putting that down, because I know we had a conversation regarding that, um, and what happened in the facilities committee meeting last week, but I think it's just, it's not. I do think, I don't know, if there is a way to, it is, it does fall under the Board of Education, but again, I think it's because we are meeting, if, at least the forum, if not the full board, um, and then if, if not, then how else would we get that kind of report, like, you know, at the end of the day, at some point, I, you know, I would love to get an actual written, um, statement on why the change order is needed, from the either, or at least orally from the, either the premier construction manager, architect, engineer, or the facilities director. So, and also because it was part of it, I know that it got a little weird last week, um, because it went into the board's purview, um, but I, I don't know that it's not anything that the committee's like approving or not, right? It's always going to be the committee's going to recommend to the full board.
Yeah, I think they're not in the pathway, that, that's why I think it should come out, pathway is construction manager, architect, district, to superintendent, to board. So I just, I think it's, becomes a little murky.
Okay, so then I'll just do it through the board, and then ask for what I'm thinking about regarding change orders, and do that, so we can take that out.
And then I, I was, go ahead. Also, I don't know if there's like a time aspect, like, you have a change order, it's because you're in the middle of a construction project and something needs to get fixed or added on or changed, and I don't wanna delay that by leaving the next facilities meeting, I don't know if that would be also part of the problem.
No, I think it, it's not necessarily to get approval from the facilities committee, it's to say, here are some of the change orders that happened or will happen, or like, and it's just kind of letting the committee know.
Yeah, no, I, I, but to your point, there was stuff that came up at a meeting last week that was not only for the committee, it was more for the board, so.
Okay. So do you, what do you see the facilities committee's role in oversight of capital projects?
My thought would be talking about reviewing reports on, you know, for example, like, number of change orders attached to a product, project, is that typical or atypical? Could, there would be all manner of things, but I would think that it would be the committee's role to recommend to the board if there are reports that do not exist, that the committee thinks would be beneficial, at a board meeting, the board would then act on that and direct the district to prepare those reports, and then perhaps the committee would be the one to review those reports and then make further recommendations to the board. What do you think of that process?
I think, I think the work of the committee maybe should be more geared towards the five-year plan, and helping prioritize and advise the board in the budgeting process which projects need to be, should be prioritized.
So the what, or the how, sort of?
Yeah, like, I, I think like capital projects, change orders, that's all your purview, and, um, I don't know if, like, a committee discussion in the facilities committee really is gonna be, like, it doesn't really come through that way to the board when we're talking about expending money and doing massive projects and stuff. So like, uh, you know, in our last meeting, which I, I think was like totally where we should be, we landed with, we're gonna share the five-year building report, we have a certain amount of money that we need to expend probably at the end of this year, let's all talk about what makes sense, so then we can recommend to the board during the budgeting process, you know, what, what we're thinking as an oversight committee, sort of something like that, like, I see building walkthroughs in here for the, um, committee, but really that's the board, so I don't know if we want.
I think, yeah.
I, yeah, so, I think so.
But again, so we had this question to go out to all of the board of directors, actually at the, at Westwood, and, and I know that we've done several walkthroughs, we did one with the facilities committee, just separately, and then you do a board walkthrough, which is required by law, so it's, it's completely separate, and we look at different things, and obviously, our, our lens and our conversations would be different, considering the goals that we play here. Um, so really, what I said on the document, um, review preventative maintenance, monitor building repair maintenance activities, oversee capital projects and long-term planning, receive and review BCS, that's a building consist, condition survey, and other facility inspections, conduct annual facility walkthrough, and review its report, um, we want to change out the review all change orders for construction and major renovation projects, and recommend approval to the full board, um, review staffing and budget reports, monitor custodial and cleaning programs, so, these are just basically my notes, so whatever you guys are thinking, I didn't see anybody else, unless you did change the color of your, your input, um, so, that's, you know, whatever, and, and honestly, like, you know, the portion that I, the paragraph that I put on top, the facilities committee will provide oversight and guidance and accountability in the maintenance evaluation and improvement of all district facilities, the committee will ensure all buildings, grounds, and equipment are safe, functional, and well-maintained to support optimal learning and working environment for all students and staff, the committee will support long-term planning and budgeting for repairs, preventative maintenance, and capital projects. I think the preventative maintenance and operations, it all kind of goes together in terms of planning for five-year capital projects, because if it's not maintained properly or we're not looking at it long-term, and we don't have a schedule on when are we gonna replace these, you know, vehicles or, or machines that we have, then, um, the project's gonna be different, so I think that's, all ties it together, um. Okay. Any thoughts?
For the review staffing and budget reports, I think would be my only question, is that something that would just be the boards or the whole, like, everyone in the facilities committee?
I think, so I'm also going based off of what was shared with us, having been on the facilities committee, um, and so that was something that was shared. Um, the previous facilities director gave us a lot of different reports and shared out a lot of information, and that's where I learned basically everything. Um, it's not, I don't think it's like you share it and then the committee decides like, oh, the committee doesn't decide anything, right?
Right.
Right, it's just kind of having an understanding of what the procedures and, um, what some systems are in place, um, for the district in terms of buildings and grounds. Okay, so, Dr. Ackerman, you want to take out that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that bullet?
Okay.
And then, did you guys want to change the, the committee advises the board instead of provide oversight?
Yeah.
Oh, my God. Yeah?
It's my recommendation.
Okay, that's great.
The second sentence is similar, the committee will ensure all building, ground, equipment are safe, and it's just that explicit reminder.
It'll go like that, so we don't.
The, the committee will, um, the committee will provide recommendations to ensure all buildings, grounds, equipment, again, it's just changing from the committee doing this to the committee's providing that's, uh, recommendations.
Then I took out this one, Kayla, interesting. Let's keep the first sentence.
Okay. Um, anything else, do you want to move on to health and safety?
Hold on, let me just make sure I have this correct, so you want me to eliminate under responsibilities the five, the, the five bullets I created, and then add, and then use, let me take these out.
I don't think you need to eliminate it, I think some are, again, it's not, I'm not, I didn't know how the wording, how you wanted to word that.
Do you want me to see if I can, probably see if I can find these examples, yeah.
Find some of this, um, this.
Okay, let me see that, let me see that. We'll look at that and see if that works, everybody.
What is BCS?
Buildings, nominations, yeah, survey.
Spell that out.
Um, or is it up here?
In the dots.
Oh, no, no, uh, under the green, do you see that under the?
It's in the.
Yeah, okay, got it. And then Kayla, also, I will share this part with Mario and, uh, Josh. Okay. Right, does that look good to everybody? This, this will come out, but I need to share this, oops, I'm gonna share that with Josh and Mario, so they know what to prepare for. I think it's not updating at all time.
Is your grab?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just hit, hit enter, see if that works. That's weird.
So you agree with that? Dr. Ackerman, yeah? Everybody? Okay. So, moving on to, uh, the health and safety committee. So Dr. Ackerman combined it, combined the original and the white light spots.
Yes, right, so we take this out, and this would be what it would be. Oh, I, wait a minute, I combined it on the bottom.
Yes.
Look at the bottom.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Everybody, actually, let, let me just, hold on, cut this out.
There's so many colors.
That's it, right here.
I mean, some of these overlap with facilities, right? Like, evaluate building safety, I feel like that's, I think that's okay.
Yeah. I think the walks we did, we did a combined walk, right? Health and safety and facilities, one year, or maybe two years. It might have been all the years.
I thought we just did a board building walk.
No, we do a board building walk because we have to, and then we did a health and safety and facilities.
We do, we do.
Like, the health and safety is committee isn't gonna be looking at the roofs, but the.
Right, yeah.
I just, I gotta take these cutting off.
If a roof falls on the street, I don't know.
But.
I know. I feel like it could be a dovetail on these thick roofs.
Only recommendation would be under the charge of health and safety committee advising the Board of Education to ensure that. Only recommendation would be under the charge of health and safety committee advises the board of education to ensure that. And what if looks good?
Okay, you're gonna remove the love? This, this one?
No, you, yeah.
Yeah, I'll take that out.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to policy. Okay, we can have the same language here. The policy committee advises the board of education to review and guidance and give guidance on all policies and regulations governing district operations. The committee ensures that policies are current, legally compliant, aligned with the district's mission and goals, and effectively communicated to staff, students and the community. If there are any changes. Comment. And then again, you'll see my notes in outline. There's one bullet point where I put a question mark at the beginning of the sentence. Um, because it's, it's a question, but you probably understand.
I, 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 I think it should be that.
Yeah, so it's moderate implementation and effectiveness for specific district policies using both quantitative and qualitative analysis where applicable. But that is something that we would have to think, like, talk through and what that would look like.
Sure, but I, I, I do, I, I think that, that should be.
I like it a lot and I appreciate it.
Sounds like you are. I do love that.
But I, I do, I appreciate it. I would, um, my one recommendation on it would be to slightly modify it to be recommend, um, I'm trying to get a word in, essentially rather than the committee monitoring the implementation effectiveness, the committee recommending to the board of education suitable policies for, um, implementation review, something along the lines that.
I think the language has got, got more confusing now because the committees are essentially.
To the board.
Right, yeah, yes, that's.
More. But I, I agree with you because.
We, we shouldn't be in the conference room of the ed building, you know, evaluating implementation of the policies as the policy committee. We should be saying in the policy committee, I think we should be saying, these are the two policies we're going to be evaluating in this, this year. Let's, and then kick it out to the board for a couple of reasons. Uh, but primarily for transparency so that the community can see us evaluating policies and they can see the policies that are working great and feel good about that. And they can see if we identify some errors or we want to, you know, tweak our policies, either their implementation or their language. And then we can, we can show that, governance.
I, truthfully, I, I think it's a great suggestion.
I, I just.
I, I don't think you should start with the question mark.
No, I, I only, no, the only reason I put the question mark and this is my thinking is that.
Like how to do it?
Yes, because certain policies lend themselves to be measured through data and then others are really more qualitative analysis or insights, right? Um, so I think we have to have a consistent way of sort of measuring that. Um, it can't be like, oh, I don't know, could five teachers came up to me and said, that was great. You know, that's not, um, like, then what are we doing if five teachers come up to me and say it was not great, right? Um, so I think we just have to figure out how we're going to do that exactly. But I wasn't sure though if that's the, again, it goes back to the committees of the whole, so it's a forum of the board is there and then you're having that conversation and then you're recommending it again to the full board, which is fine because that's something that we've always done and we should be doing. Um, but again, I would want the transfer of the conversations to be as robust as it would in the, in the committee.
Flavor, I like it.
I thought we found the line with them.
Yeah, sorry.
Almost there, almost there. There's another one with a question mark on it too. All right, what about that? The committee will recommend specific policies to the board of education for monitoring, assessing their implementation effectiveness through quantitative and qualitative analysis.
Thank you.
All right, now where's the other one that we are maintaining?
Uh, primarily functions with the board policies, time of the board.
I don't get that one. The, the last black one.
The last question?
In, in the responsibilities paragraph, the middle.
All of our functions related to the policy.
Oh, I put the question mark, which is in my leg. Under the black bullet point. Well, I just wanted to differentiate, yeah, because I just didn't, I didn't understand, yeah, I didn't understand the bullet.
On the other end. That one is a less sophisticated way of saying the last bullet.
Oh, okay.
That was my way of saying you would audit policies without being so direct about it, so take that.
Very good.
Sound.
Okay, so let's go.
And can I just ask a little question? Right now, we're doing the committees of the whole. In the future, if other boards want to go back to the old method.
That's a great question.
Are they able to keep all these charges without, how, can we do them all over again?
I think writing it the way advising.
Right, because maybe it's so convenient.
It's still, it's either way, right?
Yeah, well, because it's always whether we're advising or reviewing or providing guidance, it is to the board.
Right.
And change.
Because whatever, on a given day, we might only have a forum, any given committee meeting, not all of us there. So it's never gonna be like we're voting on things and it's not like that's all of this, so.
No. No, they don't make their own decision.
Right.
And it's not recorded or unlikely the community is there.
Well, community is there because of members.
Sure.
Community members are there, right. I just meant I didn't want then, you know, in the future another board have to like redo all of this.
Can you guys read the charge and make sure that that's right?
On this?
No, on the policy.
Oh, it's all possible.
Yeah.
Because there, there's.
And we're doing advice, we're changing it like the other ones.
Uh, yeah, let me, let me take this out so you can see what I'm, the green part.
On the green?
Oh. Do you want me to take this out? Is it too long?
How do we use the terminology regulations in our district? Are those things that you previously for.
Yes, except for two. Just to, like, implement the policies.
Yeah.
I try to not, whatever we can, I try to remove those and put it in the policy itself. But there are certain things that you need to have like a side document that is a little bit more flexible.
So then, do we want to be reviewing those or is that, is it effective, useful for us to be reviewing those or is that kind of like outside our, our purview?
It's traditionally been administrative with the exception of fees. And, um, a regulation that we created together that centered on the First Amendment. I think we should probably leave it flexible. Yeah, where it's not part of the policy oversight.
Yeah.
And then when we're adjusting a policy that has a regulation, I bring the regulation to the table. Because I, I like to try to not have it.
Yeah.
Normally, the regulation is for the staff.
So we can move what needs getting. I don't know, if you guys want to scroll down and look at the wellness committee just so that lots are prepared.
Do you want to add anything in terms of digital?
Yes, I thought we, we spoke about that last time, right? Did it not get added?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, we definitely spoke about it, we said, um, I mean.
We talked about looking this year into physical education and then this.
Maybe that's the need for, under the provide guidance, nutrition education.
Yeah, just that.
Yeah. Definitely.
And then I have a question about the collaborative one. The collaborative food service provider to enhance the nutritional quality of meals? I thought that was outside of our scope because we have a contract and therefore we cannot change what they're actually serving.
Okay. Dr. Ackerman.
Like if we upgrade the service, we have.
That's a new contract, right, that's not, not, we can be like, you know, have organic chicken from mom, we don't have federal chicken, you know, like.
Sorry.
No, it's not.
Everything okay?
Yeah, we just, um, you know, getting home has just been so difficult. We have a little road closure and, um, I just needed a piece of tape. We're good.
Okay, so.
Right, I'm sorry, where are we, everybody?
We're asking policy.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, okay.
I think you wanted to take some stuff out and we're okay with that.
Oh, um, for policy?
Yeah.
I was just wondering if we should have this second paragraph, if we need that under the charge. I wonder if the charge and the first paragraph is enough.
Yeah.
I mean.
Okay, I don't know.
That's fine.
All right, great. All right, now on wellness, so are there things you wanted to take?
So my question about wellness is the, the third bullet going down. The collaborative food service provider to enhance the nutritional quality of the meals? My understanding is that we have a contract with them and that you can't change anything unless you change the contract.
Oh, um, no, you can, uh, maybe we just change, take out nutrition, nutritional and just put quality of meals.
But we want to enter our concern in differently, we have to negotiate the whole contract, so wellness can't be.
No, yes, I understand, no, we can. The part of their participation in the meeting is because food service falls under review of the committee. And so if we take out nutrition, right, may have some guidelines and just put food quality, I think that works.
And then you had a, you talked about digital.
Yeah, just like adding digital in the, you know, in the update.
Adult control.
Add it.
Yeah.
Adult math digital, less than food, and food service.
There's a one bullet I can.
Yeah, I think.
Stop that one, the second one. Provide guidance on nutrition education, physical activity, mental health, digital wellness.
Okay.
Digital health, wellness.
Fitness and nutrition.
Service operations. Are we, are we done? How are people feeling? Three question marks, like an exclamation point at the end. Okay, we're done with that?
Okay.
But, so that was, that was it?
Oh, then it was policy, I got admission state.
With the, um.
With the charges and responsibility.
Yes. Okay, do we feel good about that?
Yes.
The entire document?
Yes.
The only at the very top, would it be board of education president or is it the equivalent of board of education since there's only a resolution that inspires me?
I think we put it to precedent and then once we decide what you're gonna do next year, we should change it.
Like, thanks.
Okay. Okay, um. So we're, would, we can move on? Yes.
Mission statement, I feel like.
We're need a little more. Yeah, yes.
What about the policy?
Coming down the last thing you have, the policy.
Policy, well, yeah, the other thing is we could, once we decide to do it, we could also, talk about it at the board meeting, um, if we decide to move forward. So the policy audit and review.
Right, it's choosing which thing you want to do. Yeah. So, can I just get clarity on a couple of this? It's highlighting all the compliance review because that seems like the one thing the policies suggested was our, was our best one. Is that why that was yellow? That came from Josh, right?
That is the one that I thought was what we were, we were talking about. But I wanted to put all the options in there so you could see that there's other things that you might want to take advantage of.
Right, because.
So for me, I don't really know if this is something that this, any of these contracts would necessarily do. And maybe this is more something that naturally happens in the policy committee, but would be like renewing if there's policies that need to sunset or, uh, you know, if we are adequately, um, monitoring the effectiveness of those policies. I don't, I think that for me was a, a big thing and I don't, I don't know if that's in here. And that just might be because that is not something that outside companies do and it is work that has to come from us.
So when I read this, it sounded like they're just gonna say like, oh, this is something, if there was a policy that didn't exactly, man, like, you know, if it didn't exactly meet the law or the standard that they thought, they would say this one needs to be tweaked. Or if something was inaccurate, they would say that. But they're not coming to you and saying, hey, I just think your cellphone policy needs work or something like that. We weren't necessarily looking to pull out policies that need to be tweaked on our opinion. And I guess my question is for policy committee in general, um, I know obviously I'm more experienced on that committee than I do, but in the past, how have we determined what we were going to work on that year? Is it, I know what happens when something comes up and we're like, oh, this issue came up unexpectedly, therefore we have to look at blah, blah, blah. But in general, is the policy just like chosen a few every year that, that haven't been done in a while or has it worked?
I'm gonna, I would share that it's the points that we're living with and using most frequently that come to the committee that need adjustment overhaul or maybe something doesn't exist that we need or there's a change in the rules.
So the only thing we're not doing is like a general clearinghouse of every, once every few years going through all of them and being like, hey, we haven't touched these ten in a long time, do we still need them?
There's some policies that are, that haven't been touched since before.
Right, so like that's the only piece that we're missing because the ones that are coming up naturally were already identified.
Yes, so I think what I was thinking is that because we haven't done this at all since Dr. Ackerman's entire tenure here, that I think it's time to do it and that's like sort of like the highlighted version. That's the compliance line review will just, is sort of a jumping point as to when they actually do look at the entire policy manual. Um, and then we can start from there. But there's gonna be other things that the policy committee needs to do. For example, you know, I know some districts they meet monthly as a, as a policy, they have a standing date where they meet and they started going through all of the policy, um, in the nineteen nineties. Let's look at all the ones from the nineteen sixties. And then some, you know, so, um, that's, that could be separate. But I think we need a little bit more structure and, and then we can get that. I'm not saying NISBA is gonna provide the best service and getting everything we want, but I think it's a good jumping off place to start looking at the entire manual.
Because that would be the whole. Sorry. This is that, like, we are initially the ones that are automatically not, you know, wrong, we're not looking for it, so whatever. If there are any.
Something reasonable and flavor about the need for some essentially project management of our policy review. And where we can track and see when was the last time we reviewed a policy, when was the last time we updated it. I would think we would almost retreat some of the different priority needs, you know, certain policies are reviewed every two years, other ones you look at every five years. We can set that up pretty easily and then we can use it as a tool to make sure we look at things and stay on top of them. Yeah, to your point, uh, the highlighted, uh, suggestion sounds like a good way to, as you said, get a jumpstart, get some outside help to then start that process since it hasn't been done in the past.
Can I ask a question? Not, not to be the cause of trouble, but the very bottom one. The online policy manual service is for districts that do not use Word docs. So, ha, ha, um, so is that mean that we cannot do the compliance review since we don't have Word docs? Or is that just?
No, we could still do it.
Okay.
As I understood it. When I went to the booth at the convention, it wasn't like you needed Word docs to get some type of service or review from them. I think they'll, they'll work with you.
Okay.
On what we need exactly. This is just like a.
Right, no, I really, it's worth having to say that, I remember that meant that we couldn't do the other one.
So am I hearing you would like me to go ahead and sign a contract with a compliance review and then we'll see how that goes and we might expand. Yes, any other errors?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other ready?
I think it's good.
Okay, we can do that.
Compliance review, I like the idea of, especially if we're staying in-house, of setting up a directory structure of all of our policies with, you know, the, the most recent version, possibly older versions and then set up some project management of when, for example, when NISBA looked at them, when we looked at them so we can take a look and like view and see what policies could use evaluation.
Okay, yeah, so we're done with that. We will need a separate session for exhibition, exhibition statement. Okay, do you want to, um, if you do three today, you approve the charges and responsibilities and I'll work with David to figure out like a place you can go on the website and then we can all look at it on Wednesday and see if that's where you guys want it.
Okay, and then we'll talk in the policy committee about what we'll do regarding the actual policies that we have regarding all the committees.
And just one other thought for another time. Is there a time to have a small discussion about some things we could do with our current technology, our current systems, our current website to hopefully address some of the issues that we think the public might have regarding access to our documents, transparency, access to contracts, uh, ease of finding, you know, the policies they're looking for. So we don't just drop that, so you say, okay, if, if people are having trouble finding sports-related policies, can, is there a way we could do that to help?
Well, I think that discussion will come if we then come to a consensus that we're not going to look for docs. But I think we're gonna, you're gonna, I can leave it all to first to people who would be speaking.
That's fine, yeah.
Um.
So don't think that.
And same for, for both of you. But I would hold off that conversation until if we do decide that we're not looking, then that would make more sense of the go that direction and then.
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to, if you have some more to do, like.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm happy to have some more deck on conversations and then I can report back what, what feedback the officials have.
Yeah. That's good. Are we ready to adjourn?
Laura, are you gonna fill it? You have to, you have a resolution on the agenda.
Oh, that's right, we're agreeing. Well, did we wanna look at it again?
Before you do that, can you just give us some guidance on how you wanna handle the mission statement? Do you want us to set up another work session?
Yes.
I think we actually have some more dates on that second block that we said.
I think it was not fully filled out, so.
Right, because we ended up coming to, to do it today, so on that initial.
You guys could just make sure you filled out what you need to fill out.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna find that again.
I'd just like to thank Dr. Hoxton and you so for moving us along and for all the scheduling assistance. Thank you.
Yeah, Matt, you have to go.
I was in a different. One was thirty-nine.
Okay. All right, we'll get it back to you, Matt. It's good, okay, so we'll do that, I'll do it online. Okay, do you want this resolution done? Did you just, did I hear it correctly, you wanted to move it to Wednesday?
Oh, no, I was thinking if you approve it now, then I'm gonna try to put this on, our term listings on the website to give you a model view of it so we can change it. We don't want all these. But we'll take it from today if you approve it and we're gonna put it on the website. And then we can review it on Wednesday and see what we have and if you want to.
Okay, so should we just unwait until?
Oh, but you don't want to put it, okay.
I'm not, I'm sorry.
All right, so let's do that. So then, due results at the Board of Education approved charges and responsibilities for the following committees, audit, communications, facilities, health and safety, policy, and wellness. I'll move. Seven, three.
I'll second.
On a favor?
I.
Okay, notice of future meetings, Wednesday, November twelfth at seven P M. We will have the middle school presentations at Forest Valley High School and the academic comments. And then after that, uh, we will not meet until December tenth, seven P M. And where we will, we get our high school presentations at here, same here, at academic comments. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at two fifty-one P M? All right. On favor? Thanks, everybody.